All right, call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 14th, and it is 6 o'clock PM. So everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dave, go ahead and start us.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sheldon Murray, here.
Dave Goldson.
Here.
Latisha McIntyre.
Here.
Adam Kelly is excused. And Stephen Smith.
Here.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? As presented by us.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any zoning commission announcements and comments? Guess we're introducing you, so you can introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. My name is Keegan White. I'm a referee, Delmarian. We're a private zoning firm that is going to be helping a township with some zoning in the future.
Sweet. All right, thank you very much. We look forward to you helping us. All right. Any other announcements or comments before we move on? Nothing from this side? No? Okay. Is there a motion to waive the public hearing and to approve the minutes from the April 9th meeting?
So moved.
There's a second? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now we're going to open up the public hearing for the applications submitted by the Board of Trustees for the tax amendment to the zoning resolution to Article 9, Section 909, which is light manufacturing district M1 for conditionally permitted uses, and opening that up at 6:02. All right, so has everyone had a moment to look over the staff reports and everything sent to us earlier this week?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions before we dive right in? Okay. So of course, we know what this is. I mean, this was started with the trustees at one of the other meetings, of course, and we've sent it over to LCPC. We have their report. We also have the planning consultant's report here. And Senator President, would you like to go over your report?
Sure. So I'll just go over the comments that we have on here since the rest is just overview, but I will say that on April 22nd, 2024, the Licking County Planning Commission did votes make a non-binding recommendation approval for this request. But turning to the comments that we have, so the main proposal is removing a number of permissioned uses for the district. These are mainly around asphalt and concrete manufacturing uses. So we view that this, it brings the district more in line with the intent and purpose of the district, which is to allow for establishments that are clean, quiet, and create hazardous or objectionable elements, such as noise, odor, dust, smoke, or debris. So by removing these, we believe that it does bring the bad district a little bit closer to the purpose of the district.
Thank you. Excuse me. And according to, let's see. From what Licking County Planning Commission says, they have a non-binding recommendation of a zoning amendment. So they recommend this, according to what I've read. And everything with Licking County Prosecutor's Office looks like it was, did you go? I'm summarizing. All of these records are available. If anyone does want to see them, just see Ms. Paloma there. I love that name. Sounds like Columbo. And she would most happily get those for you, of course. We're kind of doing a summarize here since we've already reviewed it, but we will open this up in a minute for public comments. But I'm just going to make sure first. Dave, Shelley, Steve, anything step out to you? Anything questionable? Questions?
None for me.
It looked very cut and dry to me. I mean, it's very straightforward.
Yeah, it looks like folks over at Licking County vetted it properly.
Yes.
They made a recommendation. Looks straightforward.
Yes. All right. So we're going to open this up for public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this matter, being that it is a public hearing. You would have three minutes. You can step up to the podium if you would like to at this time. The floor is yours. Thank you.
My name is Judy Ford. I live at 12156 Palmer Road, Southwest. I just want to make up just a general statement that has to do with this and anything else going on in our community. But the fact is, there's a lot going on in and around Etna. And there are a lot of individuals that are trying to make money with no regard to how it affects our community and our residents, which is why we need people like the zoning commission, the Board of Trustees, the BZA. We need these people to watch over these individual requests and make good decisions on our behalf.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Steve Wood, 6968 Palmer Road, Etna, Ohio. This request stems from a complaint from a neighbor to a manufacturer, actually a concrete contractor. That concrete contractor has had nothing but issues with the complainant next door. And in turn, what he's done is has sunk a lot of money into something. And he has tried to clean up an area the best that he can with what he's got. He is a local person also. He has property rights just the same as everybody else. And we continually debatter these people. Where are we going to get the concrete from? China? They're going to ship it over here and going to port it? Ain't going to work that way. If every township takes the notion to say that we're not going to have concrete red mix plant, regardless of the state of the art that he has tried to get in place building, then where are we going to get concrete from? In the country we live in right now, we got intel coming in here. And the reason intel's coming in here is because we couldn't get the products to keep our own people working across the United States. So in the future, all those businesses are coming back. We shipped them overseas, and now they're trying to bring them back. If we're not receptive to that, where are they going to go? And where are we going to get it from? Are we going to continually get parts and materials from third world countries? Just because it's okay for them to pollute the air? We have an EPA agency here in the United States that governs all businesses and manufacturing processes on their pollutants. And one little tidbit you might want to know about is, is when contaminants hit the ground, they go through the ground. The ground is built to filter our water. And that's where water and soil comes into play. Retention ponds, if I go build a development and I build homes, they require me to put in a retention pond so that sediments of any contaminants from storm sewers goes into that retention pond and is then filtered throughout our earth so that we can redo the water again. So you drank the water three times. It's been through the earth. Three times. Think about that. Cows go, horses go, and we drank it three times. We ain't died from it yet. Please consider what I'm saying.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments I would like to make right now? Who? Go ahead. Okay.
Phyllis Bundy, 10254 Tolgate Road. First of all, there's a difference between a retention pond and a detention pond.
Yes.
That's totally different. The other thing is, I think probably, I'm just speaking for myself, but I believe our little Etna, our little Tolgate Road and Palmer Road community all agree that that particular use is not appropriate in our area, the concrete. That's what we're saying. It's not appropriate. We have a large Etna Parkway, upon Etna Parkway. That would be, okay, you have it up there. Someplace in a manufacturing area and not in, I mean, it's been said that it's only because of one neighbor, and that's totally, totally wrong. Our neighborhood does not believe that that's an appropriate use for the concrete plant.
Thank you.
I don't think, does this work?
Yes.
Okay. Chuck Bundy, 10254 Tolgate Road, Southwest. And I'm just going to reiterate what this lady right here said regarding the concrete plant. I don't think anybody's against a concrete plant. You have to have concrete. We always know that. If we're against a concrete plant in a residential neighborhood, we're against a concrete plant that would open the door to almost any other kind of manufacturing facility. That's what we're against. We're not going to, against a concrete plant. There is an industrial park less than a mile away from where this, or concrete plant is to go in. That's where, industrial park is where this should be, not in a neighborhood. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
So am I allowed to comment at this time? Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to clarify that while this does remove these uses from the M1, they are still conditionally permitted in the M2 and M3.
Yes, thank you. Got a couple people left if anyone else would like to comment. If not, give you a minute to think about it. Okay. So I will close the public comments. Thank you very much for stating your opinion. Do appreciate everybody coming, who you are, coming today because your comments are appreciated. I do appreciate them. I'm part of Etna myself, and I do believe that the citizens have a right to speak. So from what I understand from all this, like he said, this is only in the M1 district, that this would be not allowed. Anything that is over in Etna Parkway, anything like that, that would open up because there are other places in Etna that this would be appropriate. This area, though, would not be appropriate. I agree. So, because I definitely wouldn't want that in my backyard. If I have nothing going on. So. Anybody want rabbits? I got plenty in my backyard. So is there any other comments from anyone here? Not for you.
Well, I would like to point out that the two districts that permit this kind of operation would be M2 and M3. And we have plenty of area in the township under those, so.
Yes.
It isn't that the cement plant couldn't be put somewhere.
That's right.
It's unfortunate that the land that's zoned M1 where it is, and the proposal was to remove that capability.
Just in this area. Because we, you know, progress is coming. Like the gentleman said, we have progress coming. It's unavoidable. But I understand what you all are saying also. That's something you just don't want. So we get it. I believe this is why the trustees were listening, and this is why this was put into place. All right, so. I hid something from myself, excuse me. So if there are no other comments, and I think we would be able to move forward with a motion.
Am I allowed to comment, or do I wait until we?
You can comment right now. Oh, no, please.
So in the past two weeks, I've been looking at the area, our land use map, our future land use map. And one thing that I noticed is, right now, that like these businesses, well, first of all, let me go back. I apologize. I remember when I was not on the commission, but I was attending the meetings, you guys had slated to remove this condition from the M1. What was that, mid 2021, maybe?
Yeah, it was close to that, yeah.
The commission had been through that and looked at it. And I agree. It's a conditional use. It'd be great to have businesses like these in M2 and M3. And currently, Etna Township doesn't have the roads for all the dump trucks and the stomachs that this is going to be putting in. And like we already talked about it, and the Parkway was constructed for that traffic and perfect. I know they're going to improve the infrastructure over the next couple of years. And I think we should keep this in mind later when improvements have been made to our raising infrastructure to help we can accommodate these businesses that we will need, but should remain under a conditional use. I also have, there's a ready-mix plant. I think it's, I measured on that, it's either 1.2 or 1.8 miles from me. And we don't have any ill effects at our house from that. So in the future, what I'm going to be looking at is things that are at least about 1.5 miles from residential district or a home, residential home, and in relation to the roads and infrastructure in place for that. Maybe I should just throw that out there.
Thank you.
Things that I'll be looking ahead for.
Thank you for the comments. Appreciate that. Okay. Anything else? I'm giving everyone a chance here. If you don't, I mean, no pressure.
No, no. Adam Chair, I don't want to be against commerce. I'm probably the biggest capitalist sitting in the room. However, I have to hear the voice of the people. People that I live with, right? Good plant, wrong place. Good idea, wrong place. That's my feelings. Sorry. I don't want to ever exclude looking at economic development because, you know, here in Etna Township, we can't run and hide from that. It's coming.
It's coming.
It's here. We can't say no to everything. Can't do that either. But when you have a situation so much like this that affects the residents as a whole, as Shelley talked about, you know, those kind of things, you're going to have to be very careful when we look at them. Now, again, granted, I know this individual, this company has X amount of dollars already invested. I understand that. However, it keeps coming back. Right place, I mean, right, you know, development company, but wrong place. And that's where I'm at.
Yes.
That's all my end.
Thank you. There's been several things I've seen on my tenure here on the board. It's been very difficult situations. And so that's why I like hearing the public speak. Because that's a lot of times when me, not only as a chair, but as someone who has been sitting on this side or this side, that's what matters to me. And so everyone, though, y'all have been listened to. I understand your point of view. I understand yours. We all do. I believe, though, with all the information, we're ready to make a motion. Ready? I shall make a motion. All right, so I motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees, Township Trustees, that the amendment be granted as requested. Or, I guess that's it. And so that would be for zoning resolution to Article 9, Section 909, light manufacturing district, district M1, conditionally permitted uses. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, well, first, let's do a discussion. Any discussion? It's been a while since we've had a public hearing. No discussion, okay. So you would please do a roll call.
Sheldon Murray, here.
Yes.
Dave Goldson?
Yes.
Latisha McIntyre?
Yes.
And Steve Hill. Sorry, no. Let me scratch that. So sorry, Steve. So sorry. Stephen Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. So we're going to close the public hearing, and we have Saad in place. All right. So now that we have that, we have old business. We're dealing with the rest of Article 1. Now, this has been a process we've been going through where we did Article 10 and a couple of others, where just for the public, just to let you know what we are working on. We are going through this step by step, page by page, looking through every single one of these beautiful little printed out codes and finding out what is the good for this particular district here in Etna. Anything that the majority feels that may be questionable and/or harmful for the community, we are discussing and asking about being removed or as conditional use. So that is what we are doing. The public hearing part is complete, but if you want to stick around and hear us rattle on about this, you are more than welcome to. I always like having a crowd. So I know, guys, that we have been back and forth with this while RFP was not in session.
Right.
Thank you for putting this off. That's great. And I have my other one, too. So we're just going to go through this again. I know everybody had a section, and I have to apologize. There is a couple of my notes that I did not bring with me, but I know we've been going through them, so I will ask through your sections, and I know Adam's not here, so we're not going to go through it in detail tonight just for time constraints, and also I would love him to be part of this because he has a lot of good comments to make. Anything stick out? Like Shelley, if we want to go through yours tonight? Was you able to?
I wasn't here last week. I don't know where you left off.
Okay.
I saw, I have this thing that says me and Latisha.
Okay.
And I didn't work hard on it.
That is fine. It kind of a summary.
But I didn't see anything that stuck out. Oh, I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, so these are already, okay, these are permitted use. I don't have the front of this. These are permitted uses, not conditional uses.
Yes, everything on the list right now is actually what is permitted in light manufacturing.
Okay.
So if there's something like, when we went through Article 10, there was a lot of fun things that we saw that we wouldn't want to. So we did remove them. By the way, that is also available. If she can get that for you, the new Article 10. And then I believe they're going to be updating the website. Looking in the back, but it's a man, I think, in common. Not updated, yeah. Is it the process of being updated on the website with the zoning? What did you see?
As far as accessory structure, I didn't think we really, that's what, we put that behind us. They didn't have any other questions.
No.
I wondered, like, some of these, and I thought I saw in pig farming and hog farming, which I know.
That's a great area.
I wondered, could we move some of these to conditional use?
Well, when it has to do, if I am right, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but anything that has to do with agriculture, we can't touch.
Okay.
So that.
I've heard that.
Yeah. Want to correct one of them?
You are correct.
Oh, right. We got one doing. So from everything I know, we can't touch it. Now, if it was a slaughtering house or something like that, that's there.
And I didn't see anything on this. I just went to a pig farm more than a mile and a half from somebody's house.
Different threats about that, remember? We can get back to Adam's section later. Let's see. Steve, you were next.
I have Section 18, Page 9-49. Is that where we're at? Right? Electrical equipment, appliances, and component manufacturing.
Yeah.
All right. So if everybody's there?
We are. I am.
Again, this is another situation where I don't want to tell every manufacturer no.
Right.
So the first, 1, 2, 3 pertain to making light bulbs, various types of light bulbs. Here again, doesn't seem to be harmful to me. There are various codes or code codes that talk about the actual lamp shades, the globes that go over them, things of that nature. They are talked about in the section or relative to the section. But as large, I didn't think that was too bad. Small electrical appliances, household cooking appliance manufacturers, refrigerator, home freezers, those are, been actually, 335210 through 33528 have been stricken and now are at another location in the code, by the way. So, asking for those. I did have a little problem with 335911, storage battery manufacturing.
Okay.
Yeah. In the code, I think they have it in reverse because they talk about primary batteries being made and then the storage of them. I think the battery stuff can get a little messy.
Yeah.
To be quite honest with you, because they're talking about acid, things of that nature. So.
Or stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that.
Okay.
And then the rest of the section goes into fiber optics, not a problem. Wire. No conditions there, so. The two that I have a question in that section is 3359. There's a bottle of water. The two that I am deeply concerned about in that section is 335911 and 335912. I would have serious reservations about that.
Okay.
The rest of that section, I really didn't have, you know... They talk about motors and switches and things of that nature. I didn't see anything that was too out of line. Then we go into Section 19, Transportation and Equipment Manufacturing. The codes start out with rebuilt engines, carburetors. We're not talking about manufacturing cars, but they're talking about rebuilding engines, things of that nature. Steering pumps, if you come down to 33.6330. Transmission, transmission, train parts. Again, I really don't have, you know, an issue with anything there. I don't know if they're gonna come to Etna Township to build boats, because that's in there.
I saw that, that was funny.
Yeah.
Any airplanes.
Any airplanes. I don't know if they'll do that, but, you know, maybe they will. I like the guided missile and space vehicle manufacturing. I thought that was riveting. But here again, who am I to say I'm against that? I'm just saying.
First time for you?
Yeah. Military armored vehicles, tanks, tank components. I mean, you know, I'd see a big product there. I would ask, you know, a resident expert, Mr. White, what he's seeing out there across the Midwest? I mean, are these things that a lot of people are saying no to, or just totally taking... You know, that case in point, the batteries.
Yeah.
That would... They have to make batteries somewhere, I get that. I just don't think I want them in my backyard, if you know what I'm saying, so...
Yeah, definitely. And I think that what we've seen is that battery manufacturing typically falls under, you know, relatively heavy industrial use that you see in the more intense industrial district.
Right. It's totally set alone, set aside, kind of out there by itself, kind of...
Yeah, it's out there with, like, any hazardous manufacturing uses, things like that. It wouldn't be in a light industrial area.
Right.
I would be concerned about flames.
Oh, really, yeah.
Products, anything catching on fire.
Or anything that could leak into, like, groundwater, that's a dangerous industrial property, anything like that.
And then my last section is Section 20. It talks about furniture and related product manufacturing. Again, this area has a lot of what I call code codes. When you speak of plastics and things of that nature, it is set aside. Here is like when they put them together, kind of situation. These are countertops, these are wood cabinets, these are mattress manufacturers, these are blind and shade manufacturers. So, it looks like the most hazardous components were built somewhere else, and then they are brought together to comprise the actual finished product, so... But if you want to look through that, I didn't see anything that just kind of just jumped out at me. Actually, throughout three sections that I had, the batteries are the one that did jump out at me, so...
All right, I circled them. Dave?
I have a question for Steve.
Go ahead.
Are you able to consolidate any of these into the, like, three-digit number as opposed to what we have here?
You know, Dave?
Look at that aspect of it?
Yeah, because, like you said, instead of making this so lengthy, we can consolidate down, and I would hope that we could, yeah.
Okay.
Most definitely.
Also, just so you all know, we're talking about consolidating because of how long the list is. We're trying to not dumb it down, but make it easy for the next zoning inspector and enforcer that we have coming in annually. So, instead of like... Because it's a lot of 33.6 whatever numbers, we're trying to consolidate it down to a certain section. So, everything that's in that particular section is gonna be marked that way. If there's something that we see, like you said, with the battery thing, we're going to remove that and say, remove this section, or if there's something that we see that needs to be conditionally used, we're gonna mark it as so. Just for clarification.
I would ask again, Keegan, is that... Are you seeing that happening across the Midwest, what we're doing? Trying to simplify things a little better, is what I guess is the way to say it.
So, I think we've seen a lot of that, and I think it's mainly for when people come in, they know what they're looking for.
Right.
So you can see that you have, say, heavy industrial use, this is the definition for that use, and then you can go in and say, it's permitted or it's not permitted.
Right.
In that way. Looking at this, I can't see where it could be confusing to some people coming in, like, where exactly do I fall? Is it like 310, is it 320, something like that? So I do think consolidating those uses would be helpful, not only to you as a board and the zoning administrator, but also to the public and businesses wanting to come in.
Yes.
Okay.
So, nothing else there, right?
No, that's... That's where I'm at. I ended with 20.
Okay. I think I skipped you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dave was up before me.
Dave, I skipped you.
That's okay. I'm still working on mine anyway.
That is fine.
There's a lot of consolidation that I can do, and I'm eliminating many of the things that are in there.
You have a lot. And what are the red ones, yours? Yeah, that's a big monstrous job there.
Dave, there's a lot of redundancy in your section, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there's a lot.
And I know, Shelley, you really haven't had to look over your sections much, which is fine. And I know Adam's gone. He's cruising. Adam's watching this, which he probably is. So, I think we have...
Hey, Dave, can you just tell the public what your section, see how much you really are dealing with?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go, tell them.
Yeah, you can tell them what you're dealing with.
Where's yours?
Just give them the heading, Dave, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
They would understand when you tell them what the heading is you're dealing with, how much it is.
Right. And, like I said, I'm still working on it.
Gotcha.
He's doing machinery manufacturing. And also computer and electronic products manufacturing.
Yeah.
Those are the two sections he has. If we're talking like printing machinery, dies, air compressing, gas compressing, sawmill, mining, oil and gas refineries, machineries, different things like that, semiconductors, he's got a really challenging section.
Yeah, he does.
I don't have marked who has 21 and 22. Is that Steve also? No, I think that was me.
I got 21, 22, and 23, is it Adam?
Adam, yeah, Adam's 23. Adam had 23, 24, 25.
Yes.
He had all the little ones. So I did look through 21 and 22, because I wanted to show who had them. So I can jump on that.
Okay.
A lot of the things on here, because it's miscellaneous manufacturing, so just kind of give you a summary of what is in here. It's for surgical and medical instruments and equipment and supplies, for dental, and it's a lot of medical. Also jewelry and silverware manufacturing, sporting and athletic goods, dolls, toys, games, office supplies, like paper, sign manufacturing. We actually have a couple of those in the area already, don't we? Thought we did. Fun One, burial casket manufacturing. I don't know who all used to live here or how long y'all have lived here, but we used to have one. It was right, right outside of Big Flower.
Really?
Yes, it's actually where some people may know it as Christian Corner Cafe was, right there, a small shopping center. Now it's some kind of Indian or DePaul place. It's on this side of 40. And that used to be a casket manufacturing location. I remember it was like creeping me out every time I drove by it. I was a young girl. Don't judge me. But it did. I noticed for office supplies, it says, "Accept paper." Accept paper, you're correct. Which is okay with me, because paper can be really messy. So what I'm thinking is, this could probably be manufacturing like pens, pencils, because I saw that in another area in sections. And so, I don't have a problem with that. If it said paper, probably would have a little bit... Not that paper is bad, but paper could be... Have you ever been to a manufacturing area that has had paper? There's a lot of dust involved and everything like that. Unfortunately, I happen in one. Musical equipment, that's not bad. Fasteners, buttons, needles. I didn't really see anything in 21 that jumped out at me.
Right, yeah.
Everything looks good. And I kind of saw that this probably could be consolidated to.
Right, that was my next question, Letitia.
I have to admit, and excuse my ignorance on this, I just don't know how to do it. So, I would probably need help with that. You're a good guy to go to, I'm sure.
Got it.
And then transportation and warehousing. Now, to me, I need a little bit of a clarity of exactly what this would be, because it just looks like a lot of freight, which kind of sounds like what we have, like we do have many fact... We have distribution centers. So, I was guessing that's kind of like what they are, but if I'm wrong, please let me in. He helps looking at you. I'm not that fair.
So, I mean, looking over it, it kind of looks like distribution centers. I mean, I'm seeing things like packing and crating, which could be a part of a distribution center.
Right.
It all seems it's kind of affiliated to that in some form or fashion, like refrigerated warehouses, warehouses and storage. I mean, you can get products coming in, stored there, and then taken out, so...
Right.
To me, it seems like it's a distribution.
And I've seen all of this in one distribution center, where they have a refrigerated system area, because there are certain products that have to be kept at a certain level. Then they have the area where it's packaged, crate, whatever. So I've kind of seen that. That's what I'm taking by the general freight trucking and everything, that would just probably be the dock area.
That's what it seems like.
That's what it seems like to me. Does that sound about right?
Sounds good.
So then in that aspect, because we already have that kind of thing, I didn't see anything that really jumped out at me on that one.
20 and 30, when it talks about specialized freight, I'm glad that they emphasize except used goods.
Right.
Everything would be a new product.
Yeah.
Hopefully neatly packaged.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so...
My guess would be, it would probably be like DHL.
Right.
Where they do, if they do it anymore, they used to do Cody products. I used to work there and sell them. And they have this big massive warehouse of everything in there, you can imagine, Neil Polish words. So, that's what I expand, I visualize when I'm looking at that. So 21, 22 is good, 20 is good, 19, I'm going backwards. We have a little bit of 18. Did you get where that was? Little view, no. It's N and O that we were talking about, remember?
Got it.
Dave's still working on his, I don't blame you. And we're waiting on Adam. To go back on 14, that was in my other section that I had. The only question I had was letter K and G, which is lime manufacturing and ground or treated mineral and earth manufacturing. I wasn't sure what that was. The lime manufacturing? I don't know if we even want that.
Yeah, I know.
Boy, I jumped around tonight, didn't I? And just, I don't... I'm not understanding what the ground and treated mineral would be, earth manufacturing?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not sure about that. I know the NAICS code does provide some definitions.
Mm-hmm.
So I might just look through that and see what...
Yeah, I was trying to bring that up now.
Yeah, those are things that need to be looked up in detail.
Like I said, I left some of my notes at home. Sorry about that. So I probably wrote down exactly what that meant.
Lime manufacturing establishments may mine, quar and collect, or purchase the sources of calcium carbonate.
Is that from the ground treated one?
That's the lime manufacturing, that's the end of it.
Yeah, we don't want that. I mean, we don't want that in our area. There is no place to get that here anyways.
Letitia, I just looked up 32.7992, the one you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Ground and treated. Man, it's got some ugly stuff in here, man.
That's what it looked like.
It's some ugly stuff in here. Blast furnace, slug processing.
Don't think we want this.
Flint processing beyond vitification. Yeah. That seems pretty wicked there.
It did. It just sounded weird anyway, so... Clay and pottery, I didn't see, I mean... Kilns? That may not be a big deal. I mean, we're talking light manufacturing, we're not talking on the massive scale.
Right, like Keegan was talking about in this kind of standalone area where it's...
Yes. So...
Yeah, I think that's a bit much in light manufacturing, yes.
Right, so I know there's a certain criteria, or, you know... Yep, so I'm tipping my butt. There's a certain area that they can fill, they can't go past that. So, how many acres, whatever it may be, square footage. So some of these, I don't see possibly as an issue. Blast container manufacturing. Some of that is just on, if it's on a small scale, what do you think?
It's a possibility.
I'll see if I can find some examples. Sometimes it gets... Owens, Illinois, Anchor.
Yeah.
Other places I haven't heard of. But I know what those are.
That's all good.
I've heard of Anchor.
Let's see. Then I had number 15, fabricated metal product manufacturing. So a lot of this is just like, you know, sheet metal, rolls that they make and different things like that. Plate work, metal for the windows and doors.
So it looks like they already have the metal, they are just shaping it.
Yeah. They're not manufacturing the metal, they're shaping the metal that's brought to them. They're making bolts.
Ammunition, things of that nature too, as you go down a little bit further. Those are components that they're bringing together.
Right. Small arms, different things. Springs. I mean, being that they would have the metal already, I don't see a problem with this. Because they're not doing it on a large, huge, like, going to plane scale. This should just be little things that they're making. Other than sheet metal, that's kind of large. Those were mine too. So for the record, in number 14, we were talking about removing G and K. So being that we don't have Adam here.
Yes.
And others are kind of reviewing, which is fine, because they are large sections. That need a lot of fun, attention. Does anyone want to say anything? Like, make a motion? Just off of that page.
What do you have, screen?
I think we're kind of done for the night.
We have to talk about Article 9.
Do we have to?
The GB, LV, and AB.
Do we do, where is that? Oh, this one, Dr.
Remember, that's been sent to Lincoln County. And we have a time agenda that we need to worry about.
That is right, you are right, thank you. Do we want any documentation on that?
Our minutes from April 9 said that they would be sent for Lincoln County for review. So it should be on the LCPC schedule, I would assume. And it's 40 days from when they receive it to when we have to act on it, the public hearings and the like. I just wonder if we know where that is.
Do we have anything from that, about that tax amendment? I don't know, do we have anything for, obviously for that?
I didn't even know that was sent to them, that's why I'm trying to make sure we're all on the same page. Was that sent through Open GO?
I do not know, because that was sent, I think, before or during some of the transitions that may have happened.
Is it sent before the M1 conditional use?
Yes.
Yeah. You're right, it was.
I don't think that was sent because they would have taken it up at that hearing then.
Well, it could have been afterwards because the minutes from April 9 said that it has been sent to Lincoln County for review.
That is right.
I know that they require a request that has to be submitted through Open GO. And that the process to do that, it wasn't left by the prior employees administration. So as far as I was aware, that was the first one that was done. I haven't seen anything else on their agenda or acknowledgement or anything like that. I would question if it was even sent.
Okay. Is there a way of calling and finding out about that? Would you be able to help us? I do remember what this was, there was some language that was in there that we had to change. And so we had to resubmit it because we had submitted it, that's the one.
Right, I remember that, yes. Yes, I don't, I don't remember that part, but.
It was, wasn't it the one that we had to change, the language or whatever?
I don't think so, that's the one that, that...
We have done so many of these, I am so sorry.
That we had, that Laura asked me to create.
To review, yeah, to create that.
Which I did. And then I think we sent it right after that.
We did.
According to the minutes, it's been sent.
Yeah, unfortunately, this was a meeting I was not at, I believe. Because I was at the second one, but I wasn't at the first one in April. So, but I do remember that it was going to be sent because I had discussed with you all sidebar.
No, it's worth checking because.
Yeah. Definitely.
We're on the clock.
Yeah, we're on the clock.
We're on the clock, sure.
If you want to just email and let us know if that is good to go. Because if we have to have a special meeting or something to move that forward.
The important thing to me is in that respect, you know, we've consolidated a lot of those things in GB, LV, and AB. And I'm anxious to see what the LCPC.
Right, what their comments are, right?
Right.
They say about that.
Because they send a section.
Quite a few changes.
Yeah, they send a section back to us and have us rewrite it, that's where Dave came in. And so he did the quote-unquote the language on it. So then we had to send it back, that's what that was. I do remember this now. It's been a couple of long months that we've been working on this. Yes, yeah, let us know about that as soon as you can. I know it's not tonight, of course, but so we know what to do. Okay, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight before anything else is said, like?
I'd like to know if anybody else is having problems with this Microsoft program that we have been invited to join. And I haven't seen anything about it. Other than I signed up for it and it says it doesn't work for me. So I guess it's you, Mark, that I want to talk about.
I'm going to contact, if I can contact our IT company.
Okay.
There's two aspects to it, it's the email, you can set the email on any device, but it's also for using Word, Excel, you know, all that, the storage and that, that is separate. But one thing I was going to ask is, do you think, we as trustees have laptops, employees have laptops, do you think there's a need for the board to have a laptop, iPad, or something to use that is not personal to perform their duties? Where then it would be set up on a laptop and, because everybody's got their own system, some people.
Right.
Some people don't even have computers anymore, they just do everything on their phone. So do you think that would be beneficial? And we could definitely look into that. But we can address your issue, are you having trouble setting up on your?
Nope, I created a login and it did everything it said, and then it came back and said that I don't have access.
Okay.
Mine is fighting with my home system, I will say that, because I do have this already with a home system that we share in the family. So that's a problem I'm having, when I put it on my laptop, it, my other one counters acts, it comes through.
I know, I've got my business, the fire district, the township, and when you're in Word, you can go up the top and you put which one you want to be in, and that's when it'll go to that history, go to that. So there are ways around it. And that's where I'm saying is, do you think it would be beneficial to have a laptop or, they're not expensive now, I mean, we could get ones where that's what you can use for this. Just a thought. But I can help, I can assist you with the, giving your email and that, so.
Okay.
I know, I access it like online, outlook.com, because I can't be fighting.
That's, yeah, that's a problem I was having, it's fighting everything, but I wonder about having like something small like this.
Well, and that's what, instead of dictating to you what you guys could use.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something that you could talk to our tech company and say, what, you know, somebody might prefer an iPad.
Yeah.
And they do everything on that, some people might prefer a laptop that, you know, and even our laptops that we have, it's a touchscreen. So you could do, there's various options, and I'm open to any. What, my thing is, especially with the outside zoning firm, that giving you guys the tools to make the decisions that you need, not to have to struggle with everything and finding stuff out, so. I'll be in touch with you, Dave.
Okay.
Latisha maybe would have a broader sense of what technology can we serve now.
Yes. I'm all about new technology and everything, I like, you know, change is good if it works. I'm a person that has tried not to do paper, or a lot of paper now.
Yeah, we can speak for Adam, he'd be all over that.
Adam is all over that, he would be totally all over that.
Well, if I may, that's one thing with implementing the new agenda meeting minutes software, that you guys could actually go through.
Yeah.
And have it electronically and have it, so you have access to it, and that's where that Microsoft, you have everything in the cloud, you know, the storage. So you have always have, if you had notes, you put your notes there. I'll go get my notes instead of they're sitting here or they're on this device there. So that's what we're trying to do, and I think we're doing a pretty good job with the new software. Rolling that out, and once we get into the group of it, all the boards and that.
I have to say, I think it is a good idea, especially if we as the board are taking on a little more of the duties, like with changing text and different things, I would like to have that access to be able to assist.
Well, and one thing, I'm not at the point of contacting your board, so, or with the outside zoning firm, but I would greatly encourage you to talk to Mr. Rieckholder about setting up direct access, so if you have questions, because I believe that the real heavy dig of the due diligence, you should push, put it on the firm to say, okay, these are what we see. This is actually what's in this description. And you guys are the decision makers, or if you have questions, then you can or they can dig into it further. But for you having to go, this use code might have this description, but the subcategories are this.
Right.
And I don't believe, you guys don't have the time, the, like, the experts can do that, bring it to your attention, and then you decide, I want white bulbs, I think they're good. You know, to ease it, because again, you guys are supposed to be making that high-level decision of, this is the recommendation. Not the grunt work of, not saying you shouldn't do any due diligence, but we should kind of push that off to, and once we have the zoning inspector full-time, that, that can be done in-house. But until then, I think right now we should be, you know, using Mr. White and this feels important to support you.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. This is a humble. We appreciate you being here to help us. I do.
Have you helped?
Uh, certainly, yes.
This is what you do all day long?
Sure is.
Me, I'm sure to, I just sell, so. Okay, is there any new business that is coming up? Nothing, nothing on the documents or nothing, okay? All right, and then I'm going to turn this over to public comments one more time. This one, the last public comments we had was for the hearing we had, according to that. This, we just opened it up, if you have anything else you would like to say. The floor is yours for three minutes.
I'm the same guy who was here a little bit ago, talked about the 10254, Togate Road. Now, I don't understand everything I know about what's going on here, but I have the same list that you guys have been showing.
Yeah.
And all these N I, N A I C S codes, there must be 100 of them or more.
Oh, yeah.
And you guys have to divide them up into five sections that you're going to work on. And each one of these codes, then, the very first one, 236, 236, 210, building instructions. That's a code. So what are you guys doing? Are you guys going inside of that and looking at all of the things inside of that? And making a recommendation to either change it or leave it alone? That's what you're trying, holy cats, will you?
That is what we are trying to do.
How can you do all of this and still?
That's why Mr. White's here, sir.
This is what we were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, this is how deep we dive into it, Mr. Bump.
We did this with general business, GB, LV, and AB, we just finished that. Now, we're just now to manufacturing one, M1. And we haven't even touched M2 and M3.
Well, inside of M1 is a whole bunch of stuff.
Yes, it is.
That's just M1.
Yeah.
And you have all of these other things, how can you expect to get it done?
It's amazing we don't have a twitch.
Okay, they probably fall asleep mumbling codes.
Yes, there's a time that we do.
How can you do all this?
I guess that's why they make sure we have candy at these meetings and different things like that. Keep us awake while we do that with me.
I think you've taken on a tremendous job, and I don't know if any of you are young enough to live long enough to do it all.
Dave?
Dave out of the soul.
Dave's still working on it.
How many years have you been doing this?
A long time.
A long time.
Well, good as you guys are trying to do it.
Yeah, thank you. It, I'm telling you, it's been a ride, I think we worked on GB, LV, and AB for three years, didn't we? Because of different things that came up with COVID, we had to put it on the sidebar. And then we finally got it done, we were like rejoicing, we should have had a party. Now, we have just started with M1, and we've had to set that aside a couple of times and still work on it, you know? It's one, we love our job. Anyone else have any other comments? Okay.
Next time, we're going to have a work session.
Yes, we are, I'm sure.
And so on, so we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Work together.
We like our little work sessions where we put a little table right here with a nice big mic in the middle. And we just kind of have like a roundtable discussion where everybody can see, and I don't have to keep doing this all day. Feel like I'm playing tennis. Or watching tennis.
And we use the wall as the projector.
Yes, we have it, all the NTI, and, yeah, the codes are up there with the laptop. And we go through them step by step, it's good times, if you want to show up for that. He's like, no. But yeah, that's where our work sessions look like, we're going to do that on, and everybody is okay with the next meeting, which is... Calendar, calendar.
Help me out, Holly, what is it?
28. Thank you. No.
Easy A.
Yes, easy A hearing. They have a hearing. ECA has a hearing.
So we go into now June, isn't it?
Oh, goodness. The 4th? No. No, I mean, the 11th? Yes. Sorry, I come to the meetings too, so that must be up now.
4th is trustees.
4th is trustees, 11th is us, and then the 25th of June.
Okay. So we're 6-11.
Now, just in case we have to, with what information you are doing, we'll do that by, whatever. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning in the recap room. Amen. If something did happen where we have to act upon this Article 9 with the GB and everything, would you all be open to doing a special meeting on Wednesday or something?
On Saturday, so sure.
Right. Which would probably be the 29th, if we had to discuss. If we had, would everybody, well... If we had to, would everybody, well, I guess we have to email, you know. If we had to, just keeping that open.
Okay.
I can make it work.
I'm like Dave, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm flexible, we can work something out, I'm not going to work that.
We'll work something out.
If it isn't, if it's not a Wednesday, it becomes a Thursday, if it's not a Thursday, it's a Tuesday, you know what I'm saying? We'll work through that.
We will cross that bridge when we get to it. If there is no need, then we will meet on the Monday. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
We'll be, it's okay. Anything else? Did I miss anything? I don't have the one that you did, I'm not seeing it last night. No. I took the one that I wanted.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Got a second on that?
A second conversion.
All right, I took all in favor. I was waiting for somebody to say.